Give me about two seconds. First thing I want to do is, in case I made an error, is list the members that we have here tonight. We have Marilyn. And we. How could I forget?
And Tom, Thomas just joined us. What do you think, Tom?
Find us Dom Farkas. Lee Levy. We've got. I'm looking at your pictures on here. That's what I'm doing at the moment. Just to make sure I've got everybody. Who's actually with us. Danielle.
Andy, we have everybody but Steve Ferguson.
There's Ben with us? There's Ben. And anybody else? Who's sitting tonight? 108 has been withdrawn, correct?
Yes.
Tammy, Tammy, Tammy?
Yes.
With 108 being withdrawn, I do not have to recuse myself because I don't have a problem with any of the others. And should it come back, by the way, I can't sit on it. 108 is my neighbor. So I'm not about to sit on an application on the neighbor. So what, going forward, we've got enough people that I might want to rotate folks in and out if nobody minds. But let's start with the regular crew. Mr. Lyon. Lee. Marilyn. Myself.
Yes, sir.
And who do we have that is also a regular member who's with us?
Did you get Danielle?
Danielle. All right, that's who we'll begin with. And then, Ben, are you feeling that you've attended enough that you know the process at this point?
Yeah, I would say so.
Okay, so I'm gonna rotate you in after we get rolling and do one. And so I want everybody to get a chance to participate.
Sure thing.
Okadok? Fantastic. The call, the meeting order. I've listed who's going to be on the board initially. And I have a copy of the legal notice, which is great. But let me begin with some other information at first. I presume we can assume that anybody who is in attendance has been probably to the link, Norwalk or 1913 meeting notices. And they know by going there how to come to one of our Zoom meetings. With that in mind, I'm not going to go through a long detailed explanation of that. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can also watch a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. That's beside the link. Stream is delayed approximately 20 to 30 seconds. Please find the information using the link that we just stated. The meeting recording and minutes will be posted on the City of Norwalk website within seven days after the meeting. If you want to speak, you use, and are attending the Zoom meeting, you use the raise your hand symbol to let us know that you are willing to do so and desiring to do so. There is a method to our madness, and that method is first to hear from the representative who's asking for the variance or for us to hear an appeal or a special exception. Once that representative has spoken, we ask if anybody is attending who wants to speak in favor. Then we ask if anybody's attending that wants to speak against, so that we hear both sides, an argument. And if there are those attending who wish to speak against the variance or an appeal, the representative gets to rebut. So that's how we approach it. When we say it's anybody here speaking favorite or against, that's when, if you're on Zoom and you're in the public, you want to raise your hand so that we know you do want to speak. With that in mind, Mr. Secretary, you want to get us rolling?
Yes, I will. The first application we're going to hear this evening is number 23-0615-0250-day-street LLC at all. Grant of temporary and conditional zoning approval for not more than two years for the use of Havoc Robot League Combat Robotics Tournaments per Section 118-1410A2B in an existing commercial building in industrial zone number two located at 165 Water Street, District 2, Block 83, Lot 9. Request. The applicant seeks an allowance to continue to occupy 165 Water Street for commercial recreation establishment. Robotic battles. Background: The commercial building was constructed in 1950. Previous use was office and warehouse space. The premises were recently inspected by the Fire Marshal, who advised zoning and building staff that there was a tenant occupancy without permits. Since new commercial recreation establishments are not allowed in the industrial zone, the applicant finds themselves in a difficult situation. Analysis and findings. In 2022, the industrial reg, zone regulations were revised subsequent to a comprehensive industrial zone study and commercial recreation establishments were removed from allowed uses. Current commercial recreation establishments are allowed via special permit or site plan review in nine of the current business zones such as Washington Street Design District, Executive Office Zone, Central Business District, Business Number One at all. Allowing this use for a timeframe not exceeding two years will provide the business an opportunity to continue to operate and possibly seek out a new location or other solution. This building is within the coastal area management zone, but will be exempt from coastal site plan review as a minor change in use. Mr. Chairman.
Is there anyone here to represent and speak for the act?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am.
Can I interrupt one second? I'm sorry. We have several attendees that I recognize the names, so I just want to make the announcement that the item 108, which lane was withdrawn. Sorry, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good point. We started with second item on the agenda because the first item, 108, was withdrawn.
Okay, may I proceed, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Liz Sachi. I'm a partner at Carmody, Torrance, Sandak, and Hennessy, 1055 Washington Boulevard in Stamford. And I represent the owner of the property, 50-day-street LLC, as well as Eastern Standard LLC and Havoc Robotics LLC. Present tonight for any questions you may have is Kelly Beederman, who is the CFO of Havoc Robotics, as well as Ryan Saslow, who was the general manager. A packet containing the green domestic return receipt cards and copies of any letters for which the green cards have not been received as of today was delivered to Ms. Maldonado this afternoon, and it should be therefore in the permanent file. As indicated in the staff memo, the applicant is 50-day-street LLC. The location of the property is 165 Water Street in Norwalk. Tammy, may I ask you to screen share the aerial map if you could?
Yes.
While she is doing that, we'll just get through some of the other details. District 2, Block 83, Lot 9, and it is currently zoned industrial number two and is within the coastal zone. So the plan in front of you is an aerial map. The structure that is the subject of the application is the square building right in front of you. There are approximately 93 parking spaces that surround the building. It is across the street from the South Norwalk Electric and Water, which is to the east, directly across the street. There is a commercial condominium to the north. And there is some parking lot between that commercial condominium and my client's lot is what's being circled. And there are some other residential structures to the south of this property. If you were to move to the east and to the right off the property and off this map, you would enter into Shorefront Park. So that just gives you an idea of where the property is. This used to be the site of Trudy Toys, and then after that, it was Clap's Warehouse and Offices down at the end of Water Street. The property is approximately 1.85 acres. It's improved with the 54,000 two-story building that was constructed in the 1950s. As I said before, it's 93 parking spaces on site. The application before you is neither a variance nor an appeal. It is a request for a temporary non-renewable two-year special exception to allow the robotic competitions to continue to exist at this location, which has existed generally since my client purchased the property in 2020, right at the beginning of COVID. And I think that's what in some measure led to the circumstance we're in, in that permits were not secured. It was right at the beginning of COVID. They were working on the building, getting it ready for the robotic competitions that have been held. And frankly, they just weren't aware that a permit was needed to be secured. It's just an open space. They weren't doing any construction on the interior. They weren't making any additions to the building. And frankly, it was one of those circumstances that they continued on. No one, there were no violation notices, there were no complaints. But then we found ourselves in the situation we're in right now, and we need to come to you for some relief on a temporary two-year basis. For those of you who may not know about Havoc Robotics, it is similar to what you may have seen many years ago with BattleBots. The robotic industry and the robotic sport, it provides a fun and accessible opportunity for youngsters, high school, college, and adults who are engaged, interested in those who are even in the field of engineering to get involved in STEM. The National Havoc, National Havoc Robotics League operates from the site. It is a leader in robot combat, a STEM-based sport made popular by shows like BattleBots from years ago. This, this sport began as a niche industry many, about 25 years ago, and was operating in church basements and high school gymnasium. And it has now developed into an international competitive sport with international appeal. One of the benefits of National Havoc Robotics League in Norwalk is it has helped grow this sport on an international level. The seven events that are held on Saturdays throughout the year are streamed internationally. And some teams that come to compete at this location have come from as far away as England and Brazil. So it's really putting Norwalk on the map as a center of a very interesting and unique STEM opportunity. On-site, the onsite competitions for which we seek this temporary two-year special exception take place on Saturday. There is seven a year. And for the rest of the time, that building is generally unoccupied or with very little activity taking place. So it's a very quiet use of the property with the exception of seven times a year when individuals come with their designs to battle their body against another. And young kids and middle-aged kids, middle-aged kids and older kids watch the competitions and cheer on the teams that they're there to watch. Competitors have been from high school all the way up to college and professionals, engineers, as I said before. This opportunity provides interested parties to design robots, test their skills, and compete. You further expanding their STEM skills, introducing young people, young people to the concept of STEM, honing math, engineering, design, and mechanical skills. And more importantly, I think it gives a venue to explore, compete, make friends, and learn from engineers in large measure to students who aren't athletes, who aren't in the band, who aren't in dramatics, but have a very specific interest in STEM, in robotics, in this type of activity. And it gives them an outlet, a way to meet other people and to be part of something. So as I said before, National Havoc Robotics League has seven tournaments each year on a Saturday. The matches take place, maybe I'll stop here for just a second. Tammy, would you mind if you, if possible, to go to the first floor plan? It'll be, thank you. The matches take place in the areas identified as arenas. And depending upon the size of the robot that is going to compete against another one, they're anywhere from three to 12 to 30 pounds in size. The arenas are completely enclosed in bulletproof glass. And the teams that have their robots come to the arenas, they're in teams of one or two, maybe more. And they stand outside the arenas, the robots are inside. And from the outside through mechanical devices, they have their robots fight against one another. Spectators watch either standing around the arenas or they sit in the bleachers, as you can see on this diagram. And then at this, on the second floor, and I don't know if you need to go to see the second floor, but that's kind of like a pit, as you would understand for NASCAR racing or the Indy 500. This is kind of the pit for the robots, those who are the teams that are there. If they are damaged to the robots or they need to have some adjustments, they'll go up to the second floor, gather at these tables, and the crews and the teams will adjust the robots so they can go back to the competition later in the day. One of the concerns that my client had about the competitions seven times a year is to make sure that the neighborhood isn't impacted. And one of the most significant things is where do people park? So not only are there the 93 spaces on site, but we have parking space availability across the street. It's new that they are allowing us to use on Saturdays. Calvary Baptist Church allows us to use the 20 or 30 parking spaces on their lot just about a block away, provided they're not using the lot on a Saturday. They, my client also owns other properties at 50 and 51-day-street and 0-day-street, which provide another 15, 20 parking spaces. And then directly to the north of this site, as I mentioned before, is a condominium complex with commercial tenants as well. And we are, we are able to use 50 to 60 parking spaces in that lot on Saturdays as well, provided we don't park in the numbered spaces because those are specifically for tenants. To further make sure that our impact is limited in the neighborhood, my client hires off-duty Norwalk police officers to handle traffic and parking issues. We also provide to spectators and individuals who come to compete lists of the available city lots in the vicinity, including Bets Park, Webster Street Parking Lot and the Havelin Lot, as well as a map of where there's available on-street parking. Lastly, we believe that this is not only a benefit to youngsters, whether they be middle school, high school, or college, and the public at large, but it also has a spillover effect in the greater community. Many of the competitors who are adults, who are either engineers or just interested in this, this experience and this sport, reserve rooms at the Sono Marriott Hotel and also at the Hilton Garden. And we provide transportation for those competitors to the site, which also alleviates some of the parking need on-site competitors. As some of the letters that I hope that you've had the opportunity to read suggest, this has had a benefit to the local economy, whether that be the hotel rooms, restaurants, or other retailers on Washington Street and in the general vicinity. So again, the request is to allow my client to continue for the next two years with a non-renewable two-year special exception, during which time we will work with the staff to come up with either a text amendment to allow this use, whatever form we, however we classify it, whatever definition is given to it, to allow it in the industrial number two zone. And toward that end, I have a meeting next week with Brian Baker of the Planning and Zoning Department to start that process, to either amend the regulations or figure out how we can make this a permanent use that's permitted under the zone. And we are also evaluating the opportunities that exist within the City of Norwalk to either rent other space or purchase other buildings and properties. Again, in an effort to make sure that we are operating in a way that is appropriate, acceptable, and in compliance with city regulations. So the request is submitted pursuant to Section 1181410A2B of the Regulations, which allows you as a commission to grant without renewal temporary and conditional zoning approvals for not more than two years for structures and uses in contravention of the regulations. And that's what we are requesting. Unlike most of the applications you see each, each month when you meet, this is not a variance, so you need not determine practical difficulty or unnecessary hardship. This is just a straightforward two-year permit, after which two years are up, we cannot come back to you for renewal. That's a long-winded way of saying, please grant us two years so we can continue to provide this opportunity to everyone who's interested in this, this exciting sport. And we hope that you would see the wisdom in allowing us to do so. At this point, I have nothing else to add and nothing further to share. If you'd like to hear from Ms. Beederman or Mr. Saslow, they're available, and we can certainly answer any questions you may have.
Hold on one sec. I was just going to ask right in the front end of this thing because parking would obviously be an issue. I think you said they do this meeting and competition six times a year?
Seven, about seven times a year, one day, seven times a year. So it's just about every other month or so. There was one May 5th, and there's another one coming up the end of June.
They have any numbers as to how many people attend?
It varies depending upon the time of day, but I generally, over the course of the day, we could probably see about 600 people. Families, mothers, fathers, and kids, individuals, young people, the teams. But it's spread out over the course of the day, and that's why we look to other locations for parking. And that's why we look to have police officers to manage traffic and parking in the neighborhood.
Right. Obviously, parking would be an issue, even though it's spread throughout the day.
Sure.
The facility itself, I think I remember which lighting company had it, but what kind of employee parking existed and is available?
Well, the employees can park on the site. But Kelly, maybe you could answer that better on, on competition days? Do you make other alternate arrangements for the employees to park at 50 or 51 or direct them to park elsewhere?
Correct. We direct our employees to park at 50-day-street, and we reserve that lot for this event staff that, that attend the events and leave the onsite parking for spectators.
And how many can be onsite, given that your employees are asked to park at 50-day?
Sorry, can you clarify?
Sure. On an event day at the facility, how many parking spaces do you have available, given that you have your employees parking that day at 50-days?
We have about 93 parking spaces on the property and some of the, about 93 on the, at 165 Water Street. And we have secured through the relationships that Liz mentioned. We've secured about approximately, I would say, close, over 50 additional parking spaces, probably closer to 75 additional parking spaces in the vicinity.
Actually, when I went around today, excuse me for interrupting, Kelly. It appears as if when you count the, this new lot across the way, which has between, anywhere between 10 and about 18 spaces, and they are closed on Saturday, so we're allowed to park there. Calvary Baptist Church, depending, has somewhere between 20 and 25. 50 and 51-day-street, similar, maybe 15 to 20. And then the parcel at 149, the unmarked parking spaces, the unnumbered spaces total in excess of 60. So there's clearly about 125, 150 more parking spaces that with, through the relationships they've established with neighbors are available. Then there are, then there's the, excuse me, Veterans Park, Havelin Street, which is not very far. It's a few blocks down, a few blocks to the north, the Webster Street Parking Lot. So there's ample opportunity for public parking, whether it be in parking lots or on-street parking on Day Street.
And additionally, just to add to that, for the competitors that attend, as Liz noted, who stay in local hotels, we arrange for shuttle transportation for them to reduce the number of parking spaces that are needed by the competitors. And that's something that we do at our own expense.
My last question before I throw it over to the board to ask their questions is, have you had any police complaints?
None that we're aware of.
All right, thanks. Other members of the board?
Well, I was gonna ask a broader question about complaints. Up until the inspection by the Fire Marshal, were there any complaints made to customer service or to planning and zoning over this?
Not, not that I am aware of, and I don't want to speak for Ms. Maldonado, but I don't believe there are any issues, complaints lodged. And we certainly were not served with any notices of violation, which if we had been, it would have given rise to this issue earlier. But my client has not received any notices of complaints from the neighborhood.
We didn't receive any, no, no formal complaints.
Not even from the residential area to the south?
No.
Okay, good.
Okay, who's up next that wanted to ask?
I was gonna say, the absence, who would one complain to if one were not happy? I mean, I've, I've been by. Quite taken aback by what was going on. I didn't know what was going on, so I did then go and look it up and I, my own, you know, it's, it's just a personal observation. I thought, my God, the people around here can't be terribly happy about this because there were, you know, trucks and cars parked on sort of half on the road, off, off. I guess the absence of complaints to planning and zoning, I'm not sure many residents would think of calling that.
Well, we have. Commissioner Lyon, I suspect that had there been concerns that if they didn't call planning and zoning, perhaps there would have been complaints to the police department, maybe Public Works.
Yes.
On, maybe to their common council members who, who are district in that district. I think there are opportunities, but again, you're, you're right. People don't necessarily know who to complain to. I think the ones, if you want to call it a saving grace, is that this is not every day, every week. It's seven times a year. And I think my client has done an admirable job of trying to alleviate the impact and is going to continue to do so. As a matter of fact, they purchased two properties at the corner of Barrett and Water Street, where there are structures, and that was also being used for some overflow parking during competitions.
Okay, I've covered these robotics, the first robotics, which is the grandfather of all robotics. I think everybody's not going to make an exception. Dean Kamen runs these things, and they are well-oiled machines. People come, go. The teams could be two, four, six, or eight people. But once they compete, it's like a round robin, they go and then they come back to have lunch. So it seems like nobody really hangs outside. It's not like an auto race where there are more people out of the stadium hanging out in Winnebago's that are inside. So my experience, and I have to say, I've seen these things run in stadiums where the Cardinals play, and they are very, very well-run. If this organization is run half as well as Dean Kamen runs his, I endorse this as being a very efficient way and a way to to at least give them a place to stay for a couple of years.
And may I add that I actually worked on BattleBots years ago. So I'm very familiar with, you know, the setup. You know, the only issue would, would only be about, you know, the ability to park and let people out or how, you know, where they're gathering. I mean, if it's being done in such a way that the, you know, the neighborhood has not been impacted, except in a positive way, because actually, the BattleBots is, is, it's a very positive influence on so many kids and families. So the only issue would be, as long as they can handle parking or letting people off with their robotic and having a place to, you know, make that amenable to the neighborhood, it sounds like if the neighborhood, I mean, for seven times a year, you know, if it hasn't been, you know, in stress, no one has really reacted to it. It has tremendous positive, you know, influences on young people and families. It's, so. It, it, it's a good thing, as long as the neighborhood can handle it, and it seems like they have been able to. So.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask a few questions? First of all, I live not too far from there, and I think it's a very cool use or adaptation of an existing office building, and that's kind of cool. And obviously, the parking, you know, when you have an event going on, it's very noticeable. But when you kind of converted that office space to this BattleBots space, especially on the ground floor, there were no permits sought out, no building permits required for that change?
I would tell you that they, I think the, the best answer is they weren't aware that they needed to get permits since there was no construction that was going to take place. There was no, they, my client just didn't think that that was necessary, and it was right in the beginning and right in the heart of COVID. And they moved along, and there were no issues, there were no complaints, there were no violations. And sometimes that happens, and this all came about when the Fire Marshal was contacted or read about it in the paper and said, what's going on there? And then everyone realized, oh, my goodness, we really do need to get everything squared away and get the proper permits that are necessary from the city and whoever else, and that's where we are today.
Okay, so is the, is the floor plan? Okay, so is the, is the floor plan and the layouts, are those being evaluated currently for egress and life safety with this change of occupancy?
Yes, they are. The fire marshal has been in, the fire marshal has approved. As a matter of fact, the fire marshal is and is at the events. And now that they're held there, we have a whole safety protocol. The ingress, egress, how the, how the matches are held, that has been evaluated by the fire marshal, not only on paper, but has come to the site to see how all this, how all it fun, how it all functions. We've also been in touch with the state police because there's now a state police permit that's necessary. So that's underway as well.
Okay, because I think, you know, I'm inclined to approve the special exception because I think it's a good use case, but I think we would want to make sure that all the permits and the egress cap- capacity serves the current use case that we're essentially approving.
Absolutely.
And just to follow on from that, Liz, is it correct that the, the company would, would want to continue in this space?
If the, excuse me for interrupting, Mr. Lyon, if we are able to adjust the regulations to allow it in this space, I think the initial answer is yes, but it's such a growing sport and has such a wide interest. There's probably space that we will be looking for, my client would, would seek out to provide a, to provide access to a larger audience. So I think the short-term answer is yes, stay here. It suits our needs right now. But I'm certain that they will be looking for larger space and know full well when they look for larger space at the process that needs to be undertaken will be undertaken prior to that.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Oh.
Right, I have one last one. That is, if I were running these events and I had seven instances per year, I would want to fill in and intervening for years with something else. Do you have plans for something else?
I can answer that. Liz, would you like to answer that?
Great.
We don't plan to hold events of this scale in between, in between sometimes a year. I think if there were other use cases, it would really be just to support getting more children involved in the sport, for instance. But we don't have plans to to use the space for events of this scale.
We're cutting out a bit, Kelly, unfortunately.
Oh, sorry.
You're okay. Your voice went away and became Starship Number Two.
Oh, sorry. Uh, I was, can you hear me okay now?
Yeah, that, that helps me quite a bit. But if we condition this to say that it's only for seven events per for the two-year period that you'd be given permission, you could live with that or not?
I, I think we'd like the flexibility to be able to use the building during the week to whatever extent we need, but the, the larger events are the ones that they only have seven a year. But I think to Kelly's point, if there are opportunities that emerge, that would be beneficial, not only for the robotic league, but also for schoolchildren or others to come to the site, use the facility, use it as to train, to develop. I think that would be helpful since it is a large building that shouldn't just sit there unoccupied or unused six, you know, 350 something days a year. Having said that, I'm sure that whatever other uses my client puts this building to, they would undertake the same type of safety, security, parking and other protocols to be reasonable and good neighbors so that it doesn't impact a larger scale.
Somehow, we need to set some sort of limit because while seven times a year doesn't make the community super angry, I think a lot of them in a row would make the community super angry. So we got to come up with something that tamps it down, the, the facility space that's available and the parking that's available. Go ahead, Tom.
I mean, could this be used as a practice facility? Let's say you had, your large asset that some of the elementary schools want to get into this and you might sponsor them during the week, small classes to learn. Or people who are competing that they need a space because this is a pretty big arena to come in to practice, probably, right?
We could envision something like that, yes, in the future.
Yeah, I don't want to be misunderstood. I think that's a good thing, but I don't think the full-blown event, one after another would be, would be a good thing. I think that'd be a bad thing.
To be clear, we would not engage in, in more large-scale events with much more significant frequency than seven times a year. I would say just from a, an operational perspective, that's highly, highly unlikely.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Do we have anybody that else on the board that wants to ask a question? I'd like to move this along.
Andy, can I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Yeah, just with regards to the parking concerns. I think something that might be important to note is that this facility isn't a good location to get there by means other than by car. It's only about like a 10-minute walk from the Sono train station and there's multiple bus lines that run through there. I don't know if the applicant ever encourages spectators to get to the facility by, by other means. I imagine that for the competing teams, that's probably tricky because they got lots of equipment. But, you know, the bulk of the, the crowd is spectators. So maybe that's something that, that they could consider to mitigate the parking concerns is encouraging people to get there by other, by other means.
We can absolutely, we can absolutely do that. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Well, I, I agree with your concern, Andy. I think you're probably spot on that if this were monthly, it would end up with lots of complaints. So if that's a restriction that we're going to request, we probably just need to have a definition for whatever this seven times a year event is.
Yeah, I think so. Do we have anybody that wants to speak in favor of this on Zoom? And let us know that you want to speak, you raise your hand. There's a way to do it on the phone as well.
Yep. If you're called in, you press star nine to raise your hand.
Anybody?
No raised hands. We did have letters of support.
Okay. How many?
Eight, I believe. Six, six true letters of support and then two sort of informational letters from the applicant.
Okay, let's go with the six that were true letters and if the secretary doesn't have them available, do you?
I do not have them.
I don't remember seeing them. But let's note that Tammy apparently has received support letters.
I, I have an email with, with eight letters.
I have letters.
Do you? Okay.
Yeah.
Is, did you ask me to read them? I, I'm sorry, I missed it.
But if, if Lee doesn't have them and he doesn't, you should jump in and read the six.
Okay.
If they're the same letter, Tammy, you just tell us who the second or third person is.
Yeah, they're, they're, I'll start with a shorter letter. So this is from O'Neill's Pub and Restaurant, Donald Lee. Dear City of Norwalk, thank you for the opportunity to submit this letter in support of National Havoc Robots, Robots League permitting requests for future events. As a small business in Norwalk for the last 24 years, we know how vital tourism and foot traffic is to the success of businesses like ours and the local economy. We believe that NHRL's request will be beneficial as their events will help drive increased engagement and involvement from community members and bring those from outside of Norwalk into the city, exposing them to all that Norwalk has to offer. We strongly recommend that the city support NHRL's request and we look forward to partnering with NHRL in the future. We've got one from Frederick and Beth and Carl Hogg. To whom I concern, my name is Frederick Carl Hogg and my wife Beth Anne have been pillars of the Norwalk community for over 27 years and active in the Norwalk public school system. For the past year, five years, we have been able to grow our Combat Robotics Club, BAD Crew, due to the generosity of NHRL and their welcoming and environment to engage not only high school students, but everyone from all walks of life. That is unheard of in today's world. It is imperative our robotics club keeps our students engaged in our FRC Robotics offseason from May to November as our students thrive in this learning environment. They learn to develop a robot from start to finish, including fabricating, electrical, driving, time management and problem solving. What an amazing hands-on way to learn for the over 50 students that have gone through this program. They have developed new friendships with other builders from all over the world with all types of backgrounds and experiences that is unmatched. We have seen many changes across the area over the past two decades and the one business that has had the most impact on us is the opening of NHRL in Norwalk. This organization has provided so much opportunity, not just for students, but for everyone that wants to try their hand at building a combat robot. NHRL's kindness and eagerness to grow STEM in the community surpasses any other high school or local college class. One of the best things about this community is they are eager to help and teach the next generation of battle bot builders. We couldn't be more thankful for the partnership with NHRL and can't wait to see how our robots do this year. Okay, then there's from Maria Sims Ringside Grill LLC. I hope this letter finds you well. I'm writing to express my enthusiastic support for NHRL and its impactful initiatives, particularly the Robot League. As a member of the community in Norwalk, I have witnessed firsthand the positive influence this event has had on our city, its residents and local businesses. The Robot League organized by NHRL has proven to be instrumental in bringing numerous benefits to our community. Firstly, it has significantly contributed to attracting more customers for local businesses. The excitement and buzz generated by the Robot League have drawn visitors from far and wide, injecting vitality into our local economy. This event has served as a catalyst for increased foot traffic and exposure to the businesses in Norwalk. As a local small business owner myself, I would like to emphasize the tremendous value that being an invited vendor at the Robot League events has brought to businesses like mine in Norwalk. The opportunity to participate as a vendor has provided a direct and tangible benefit to the local economy. By setting up shop at the Robot League events, my business, along with other local vendors, has gained exposure to a diverse and engaged audience. The influx of participants, their families and supporters has allowed us to showcase our products and services, expanding our customer base and establishing valuable connections within the community. The Robot League events have proven to be an ideal platform for promoting our offerings to receptive and enthusiastic audience. Furthermore, the positive atmosphere and community spirit generated by Robot League events has fostered an environment conducive to fostering relationships with customers. The shared excitement and interest in the event have led to meaningful interactions and an increased likelihood of repeat business. Participating as a vendor has not only provided a boost in sales during the events themselves, but has also resulted in sustained patronage and customers loyalty long after the competitions conclude. Equally important is the profound impact Robot League has had on our younger generation. By providing a platform for children to engage in robotics and technology, NHRL has bestowed them with a valuable opportunity to develop their skills, foster teamwork and ignite their passion for innovation. The event has become a beacon of inspiration for young minds, offering them an avenue to explore their potential and cultivate their interest in STEM subjects. This investment in our youth will undoubtedly yield long-term benefits, shaping them into the leaders and problem solvers of tomorrow. In conclusion, I wholeheartedly support NHRL and its commendable efforts in organizing the Robot League. This event has proven to be a remarkable force for good in Norwalk, bolstering our economy, enhancing our reputation and enriching the lives of our youth. I strongly encourage continued support and investment in this invaluable initiative. Sincerely, Maria Sims. That kind of gave me goose shivers. Um, another letter of support.
Would you like me to read Tammy one letter of support to give you a break for a minute?
This, you can take this long one if you want from Jeffrey Spar.
Whatever you'd like. I can do that one or I can do one of the others, give you a break, whichever your preference is.
I will bestow Jeffrey Spar's letter on to you.
I'm happy to. A letter in support of Norwalk Havoc Robotics League, to whom it may concern. I wanted to take this opportunity to tell you about a hidden gem I stumbled across and it is in our own backyard. A year ago, I ran across a promo on Facebook for something called the Norwalk Havoc Robotics League. I was intrigued. I've always been on the lookout for unique, fun and safe things for my son to do and that would get him out from behind a computer screen. So I decided to take a look into it. When I explored further online, I was immediately impressed with the images that the league had posted on their media pages celebrating Norwalk. There was a great video clip, apparently from a drone. What else? They cruised down Washington Street in Sono. It was lit up and beautiful. There were also shots of the harbor and great attractions nearby. My first thought, first thought was, this is really a great piece of advertisement for our city. In fact, I even reached out to the economic and community development staff to let them know about this and they already knew. With my curiosity piqued, I decided to attend one of their upcoming events to see if my son and I can enjoy it together when he got back from school. I could not have been more impressed. Not only was it interesting and exciting, but it was also a thoroughly first-class operation. The setup was impressive and professional. There were different cages where the robotic combatants would engage one another in radio-controlled duels. Each match was broadcast live on a number of CCTV sprinkled liberally throughout the arena. Thus, you could sit in the bleachers in front of the cage where the battle was taking place or watch it on a monitor. There was not a bad seat in the house. In addition, each match was commented on in real time and thereafter analyzed by a very entertaining broadcast crew. Think Al Michaels and Marv Albert announcing an Android boxing patch. They were exceeding, they were exceedingly informative and entertaining. On the premises, there was also a number of displays featuring robots of some fame who have fought in the past, as well as several food trucks providing a nice variety of meals and snacks. There are also liquid refreshments as well as merchandise souvenirs available to the public. If a person was lucky enough to get a VIP pass, they were treated to a behind-the-scenes tour of the room where the petition, participants put together, fine-tuned and repair their gladiators for the next rounds of fights. It should be mentioned that the participants come from across the country and in fact, other countries. For example, whole teams will come from polytech universities from several states. Further, a number of schools across the state are now including robotics clubs as part of their extracurricular activities. These teams will travel to this event. Think little leaguers going to Yankee Stadium on a field trip. This is important to note because this means that our local hotels, restaurants and businesses are enjoying an influx of visitors and consumers, many of whom impressed with the offerings will be repeat customers. There is another benefit to the community from hosting such an event. Our population of young people includes a number who are more comfortable on a computer screen than they are on a ball field or court. In-person interactions seem to be declining. Not all of these kids will or can be successful athletes. Not all, therefore, will ever be a member of a team and the benefit, and benefit from all this provides. However, this venue provides these kids with the opportunity to be entertained and thrilled, along with any number of like-minded techies or nerds IRL in real life. Here is a personal note. My son is a man who is on the spectrum. He was never interested in going to a ballgame with me as I was with my father. We've never played catch in our backyard. However, this event is right up his alley. We've attended a number of these extravaganzas and I cannot tell you how rewarding it has been for me to go to this event with my son and enjoy not only the action, but his company as well, as we bonded. I'm not familiar with the particulars of the application that is, that is before this commission and do not address them. However, I want to take the, wanted to take this opportunity to provide my support for this event in general in the hopes that it can continue and be promoted within the boundaries of our local regulations. Hopefully, I've been able to get across the point that this event is beneficial to our city, our various communities and schools and local businesses. It is an entertaining, clean, enjoyable event that needs to be supported and promoted by our government. I believe we should do whatever we can to ensure that this event thrives and continues to grow, since we all benefit from it. Sincerely, M. Jeffrey Spar, Norwalk resident and native.
So then there were two more that both very positive. One from, can I just paraphrase and say it's from the owner of Echo Evolution? He's a local business on Washington Street and he's, he's just thrilled that sales have been boosted because of the events. And then finally, there's one from the director of sales at the Hilton Garden Inn, who also says that NHRL is their valued partner. They brought a significant amount of travelers to Norwalk. Benefits the hotel operation, the bookings, you know, impact the hotel staff in a positive way. And that guests purchase meals from the hotel or use local businesses. And so they're grateful of that.
So at this point, do we have any further commentary from anyone online that wants to speak in favor?
You'll need to use your raise your hand feature. There's no one.
All right. Is there anyone that wanted to speak against the application? Who's online with us?
So again, you'll use raise your hand or if you've called in, you'll press star nine to raise your hand. No raised hands.
Right. Right. Uh, there's no need to uh, rebut. There's nothing to rebut. So with that in mind, uh, one last shot from the board, if there is a question you think is still open in your mind, please ask it now. Hearing none. Uh, we're gonna close this. And we're gonna move on. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board for your time and attention tonight.
Next up, Mr. Secretary.
Okay, the next item is two, three dash zero, six, one, five, dash, zero, three. Mark and Pam Hollis. Variance of height. Allowed thirty one feet mid roof, thirty nine peak roof. Proposed thirty four point three feet mid roof. Forty point three peak roof, section one, one, eight, dash, three, four, zero, C. Or proposed new flood compliant, single family dwelling in the B residence zone. Property located at ten Harborview Avenue, District Five, Block Eighty Five C, Lock Twenty Nine. Revised proposed height to be thirty five point one feet to mid roof. Forty one point four to peak roof. Request. The applicant seeks variance of height maximum to construct a residence in the V E flood zone. The initial proposed plans have been revised subsequent to legal notice and publication and neighbor modif- notification. Staff asked the board to consider whether the original legal notice and neighbor notification is sufficient to hear and decide this item tonight or whether the item should be continued so that revised legal notices are published in the Norwalk hour and new neighbor notification letter sent. There's roughly an additional one foot requested sought variance since public notice. Background, the existing dwelling was built in nineteen forty eight. That structure would be demolished to the new build. The parcel is within both the A E and V E flood hazard zones. The existing and proposed home are located fully in the V E zone. Analysis and findings. If this request is granted, the existing home will be construed. The existing home will be constructed. Now, that's not correct. If this request is granted, the new home will be constructed to meet FEMA flood compliance for V E zone. There are no other variants sought other than height to construct the new home on pilings. Should the variance be granted coastal area site plan review will also be necessary. Land use planner Amelia Williams. Uh, Amelia Williams memo attached. As provided a memo indicating the requested variance of height is not a factor in the coastal site plan review. The driveway turnaround key will need to be reduced to eight by ten feet maximum. Mister Chairman.
Um, the folks that sat on the last one, just in case you didn't all in when I said it was Andy Conroy, Marilyn Altman, Lee Levy, Daniel Sancheck and Keith Lyon. And item number three. Sitting as the board will be Marilyn Altman, Lee Levy, Tom Parkus, Daniel Sancheck and Pete Lyon. Ben, you're in on the fourth, not the third.
Sounds good.
Mister Chairman, do you want me to read the memo?
Oh yeah, you just, we will, you and I will perform our normal function whether we're sitting on the board.
I know, I know. But you want me to read the memo from uh, okay. Subject coastal site pan, site plan review of ten Harborview Avenue for variance application number two, three dash zero, six, one, five, dash, zero, three. Height for a single family dwelling. Uh, upon review of our records and maps, it appears the property at ten Harbor Harborview Avenue directly abuts coastal waters. The closest point of distance is the deck stairs approximately twenty seven feet from the seawall. This project requires a full coastal site plan review and CAM application to the Planning and Zoning Commission per section one, one, eight, dash, one, 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 zero of the City of Norwalk zoning regulations. Further information is required as part of the CAM application, which will help determine the anticipated adverse impacts on coastal resources and or future water dependent opportunities. This will include an environmental report, CAM assessment, landscaping plans, drainage report, utility plan and erosion and sediment control details. Consistency with the goals and policies of the Coastal Area Management Act cannot be determined with the limited information required for this variance application. However, the requested variance of building height is not a factor. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. If you have any questions regarding the above, please call or email me. Mister Chairman.
Yeah, once again, because the question was a little funny there. Sitting as the board for the decision on this is Marilyn Altman, Lee Levy, Tom Parkus, Daniel Sancheck and Keith Lyon. All right, uh, who is representing the applicant?
Uh, I am, I'm uh, Bill Earls. I'm uh, an architect. And I've done a number of projects down in this neighborhood over the years. As, as was noted, if the uh, variance of the height requested is four point one feet and to, to the peak and two point four to the midpoint. This is a relatively uh, uh, long lot, so it's a very long block, let's say. But it's narrower. It's an existing nonconforming lot for width. The lot, the minimum width uh, required is fifty and this lot is forty with. So we kind of squeezed on the sides a bit, which may squeeze us up essentially a little bit.
Give us a clue, is the what, do you proceeding or?
I'm sorry?
Give us a clue. Are you proceeding or are you all finished? We could ask a lot of questions, um, but if that's your presentation and you have made it, let me know.
Yeah, that's, that's pretty, that's pretty much the pre- the presentation.
All right. Your total height of the building is being varied is your request. And could you tell me how it stacks up? The space underneath, so the, you mean the FEMA regulation uh, four, one and four, two, and there must not be a four, three.
No, this is a, there's a two and a half story minimum. We have story maximum, we have story maximum in this zone. And we will be that two and a half story. Yeah, the, the th- this whole neighborhood is, has this condition where uh, if you do any work on a house, that's worth more than fifty percent of the structure, or if you build a new house, you have to comply with FEMA and, and, and Norwalk adds an extra foot onto that top of that. So that is measured to the underside, uh, so they want to get the bottom of the building uh, to the elevation sixteen. Uh, that's really, first traditionally, that was to the bottom of, of, of framing. Lowest horizontal structural members of your drought beam supporting framing was the bottom of that drought beam had to be a sixteen. Uh, the, now it also includes any kind of duct work under the building, so things keep getting kind of pushed up. Uh, and yet you know, we still have a height limit to, to kind of wrestle with, so.
So you have fifteen and then eight and eight and then one. So that's sixteen, seventeen and fifteen, thirty two, you need thirty three. Is that my recollection correct?
I'm not sure.
I'm just trying to add up the stories and get full height.
So we have uh, basically about a foot of, about a foot of structure. So if you're um, at sixteen feet to the bottom of the duct work, you gotta basically add uh, a foot for duct work, about a foot for structure, you're, you're eighteen. Uh, then, and uh, and then.
You're maxed out in terms of allowable. I understand what your issue is and I just want to make sure that we're not sneaking in a story that's only what's seen people do recently. And what we tried to do is say if we're gonna raise the structure, we're not gonna make the area more massive than it takes to raise the structure. That's our goal.
No, I mean, we're, we're still limited to the two and a half stories. That's, there's no way around that. Uh, that, that the building has to be built on peers basically, or else that whole raised level would be a story.
Let me back out of this and let the other board members take over and ask questions.
Um, I take it from your description of the elevations that the uh, underside of the structure and duct work is just above the floodplain elevation.
Yes, yes, I mean you're.
There is no other room to go down. Correct?
Can't go down, no.
Okay, now I'm just, I'm asking, I've got a lot of experience in building houses in flood zones too, so I know the game. Um, was, I, I, I mean, being a relatively long structure, is there any possibility of eliminating the half story to meet your height restrictions? You're making the house longer.
Yeah, I've seen this game played a bit in, and I, in Harborview where they eliminate the, that half story by doing a big flat roof structure, you know, and I, and I want an expressive roof facing the street. I'm, 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 I want a traditional looking house, you know, I, I, I don't want to play the game of, oh, you know, uh, the, the peak being the same as the mid, midpoint basically, and then he's flat roofed, flat path buildings. Um, so the, having a traditional look, you actually have a peak.
I understand that.
Yeah, you know, trying to, uh, and I don't, I don't want to ask for more than we, than we need. I'm, I'm trying to ask for the minimum uh, to not, you know, I want it all to be in context, everything we do there and then you probably really want to take a look like and duly, you know, it was always there, you know, even though we're raising these things, I wanted to make it look like that was always the original intent and that, that would you know, the traditional looking architecture, I think blends in best uh, in that neighborhood.
Well, I would agree, uh, you know, you've got some very expressive architecture with the uh, the arches sitting on my peers. And that's obviously your design philosophy on this. I'm just looking for other ways to reduce the height of the structure. And you're telling me there is no other way.
No, I don't want to go for a variance. I'd rather not, but uh, I'd rather it be easier to not go for the variance, certainly. Um, but I think part of it is again, this is the width of the lot, you know, we kind of get squeezed left and right, which kind of pushes you, also pushes you up bit. We're not maxing out the available coverage. Maxwell, the allowable coverage is two, two thousand eight hundred and twenty four. Or two thousand three hundred. So we're not put anywhere near pushing the allowable coverage on the, on the lot. Um, not looking to make a massive house, it's a three bedroom house.
I have, I have a question and um.
Not that, wait, 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 hold it. I'm sorry, really here and the answer to the last question. What I heard was a thought process, but not an answer. So the answer is you think by virtue of your design that you cannot uh, stay lower and expand out lengthwise.
I mean.
Is that yes or no? That's just a simple question.
No, not the way it's designed. No, the bedrooms upstairs.
All right, that's good, that's good. Go ahead, Keith.
Um, I, it's not clear to me what's driving the uh, the revision reading subsequent to legal notice publication and neighbor notification. Is presumably you were all right prior to that.
The, the, the revision was an extra foot and uh, the, the kind of rule of thumb down there had been, you know, in the A E zone, you're the, you've got to get the first floor to at least fourteen feet of, of sea level in the V E zone which we're in, it was sixteen, sixteen feet to the lowest horizontal structural member. Uh, but uh, that's changed. That's now sixteen feet's the lowest utility, which includes duct work. So I'm, I'm asking for that extra foot uh, uh, to accommodate the, the duct work, which is a relative.
Well, let me ask this question then. Have you spoken to an HVAC contractor who might offer a design solution not to have the duct work sitting right above the floodplain?
Well, my, my first inclination was, oh, I, I, that's, can I, can I get the duct work between the joists? Right? So, so I wouldn't have to have the duct work beneath the joists, right? But I'm already minimizing the depth of the floor framing by doing flush framing so that any kind of structural beam is not trapped below. It's flush within the framing, which kind of blocks my roots, blocks the roots of duct work. So.
I mean, it's, it's possible to use uh, open web trust choices to run lateral duct work in a, let's say a high velocity system.
Yeah, those, those tend to be taller beams that we're gonna be kind of be fighting our, maybe, you know, our.
Well, even if you went from a twelve to a fourteen, you've eliminated ten inches. I mean, we're fighting for inches here as you are.
Yeah.
And I'm just trying to get an explanation or an understanding of what's going on.
I mean, we'll, we'll be using fourteen inch T J I flooring, so the floor is already fourteen inches. And, and recessing up the structural beams that those will frame into to, to minimize the depth of the structure itself. Again, blocking any roots unfortunately for, for duct work.
Well, you know, I'm, I'm just trying to explore what the options might be. And from what I'm getting from our conversation is that there are no alternatives for you.
I may be.
Right, Danielle, you were gonna ask a question?
I was just gonna ask if the rooftop pool was above that maximum uh, roof height?
No, no.
It's not. Okay, so it's just the kind of peak of the um, that storage space in the bathroom that's up at the attic level.
The, the, the heights measured to the midpoint of the roof and to the peak of the roof.
Okay.
I asked a question and this is actually Tammy, I, I don't have anything about um, any of the surrounding people. Has anyone weighed in on this for the, that extra foot that there?
So the applicant made notice to the neighbors. They provided uh, the receipt of mailing. Um, I, I, I didn't get any calls. I didn't get any emails. Um, the one thing I, I wanted to just clarify in my staff memo, so and, and to address Keith's question that the initial plans called for uh, height variance. Then because of this, this, this um, understanding or misunderstanding. Understanding or misunderstanding regarding the. Mechanicals need, including the duck work needing to be at BFE plus one as well. That is what very recently changed, so I advertised in in the hour that. The first set of metrics, which were. Um thirty four point three to mid and forty point three to peak. So the the gist of of the variance request, the neighbors were made aware of through. Uh the hour publication and through neighbor notification, but they have since then asked for. You know, about a foot more. I don't think it materially changes. I don't think anybody is going to say, oh, I I'm coming out now because it's another foot. But I just, it's it's really up to you guys to decide if that's sufficient notice. Uh or do we need to renotice?
When did you say that notice was given?
What was that Marilyn?
She wondered when. Notice given.
Oh, notices were uh given on. I don't know when the neighbors received their notification, but I know it was mailed on time, which is uh ten days prior to the meeting. Um but in the hour it ran. On last Thursday and the Thursday before, which were. The June first and June eighth.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, anybody? Jump in or we'll move on.
I really don't have any further questions.
Okay. So what we need now is if there's anybody out there supports that wants to comment. Raise your hand, uh which includes star nine on your phone.
No raised hands.
Okay, if there is anyone uh on the Zoom meeting who wants to object. Uh again, raise your hand, star nine, if you're on a phone.
No raised hands.
Okado. Um I don't see any need to have somebody. Debate this because um there's really not much in the way of opposition. Uh is are we done as a board? You know, you know who's sitting. Are you all satisfied that you have enough information now?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
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 So we'll close and move on to the next.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is.
Let me be believe before you go, let's change the way we do this, because you know how uh after the meeting we went to, you we should say who's sitting and each. Board.
Oh, go ahead, Andy.
Um so sitting on this one is Marilyn Altman. Lee, you're not. Parkus, Tom Parkus is, well, it doesn't even, can't read. Check is um Ben Handpeter is and Keith Lyon, one, two, three, four, five. So I didn't sit on three or four, and we've got everybody pretty much covered here. One more time, Marilyn. Tom. Danielle. Ben, Keith, go ahead.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is two, three. Dash zero six one five dash zero four, ever source. Variance of the required two-story minimum for replacement pump station. Section one, one. Eight dash five two one C two in business one zone. Property located at four seventy three Connecticut Avenue, District Five. Block seventy three A, Lot eleven, request. The applicant seeks to construct a pump station with only one story. Background, a variance was granted in twenty twenty one. Uh however, building permits were not obtained, which rescinds the twenty twenty one variance. The proposal for replacement pump station is being made. To relocate the pump station to a preferred location on the parcel. Analysis and findings. The two-story minimum requirement in this zone was intended to encourage efficient use of land by promoting. Residential and office space above the retail use that dominates Route One. Since the proposed building is a sewage pump station. The intent to require two-story would seem unnecessary. The nature of the use. The pri proximity to high tension wires and Keeler Brook are all hardships for this application.
Is there anybody representing four twenty five? No, huh?
No, there are. We have a.
There's a, there's a few of us, uh my name's Ralph Cole. Senior Environmental Engineer for the.
I'm sorry, I think I got frozen. I'm sorry about that. Um can you give me a well, I'm sorry, so Vanessa Valadadis, Chief of Operations and Public Works. I think I got frozen again, no.
You're good.
Okay, sorry about that, uh I think my my.
Stop one second, just tell me who the two of you are and how you're related to each other and.
Of course.
Forward.
Yes, so I'll start again, so Vanessa Valadadis, I'm the Chief of Operations and Public Works. And Ralph Cobb is the Senior Environmental Engineer under the WPCA Agency. So we're both representing the city of Norwalk, so I just want to clarify that. Uh the city of Norwalk is the one under the WPCA. We're the ones that we're gonna be replacing the pump station. The existing pump station is part of. Our assets as of now, so we already have one pump station. Uh in that location, but we need to replace it due to the conditions of it, and we need. And we're in front of you tonight to request a variance. Because we can only build a one store on that parcel. Um and I'm gonna get to the details of it. I just wanna also clarify. Uh that we have already a past approved variance. Exactly for the same project with no change from the original one. Um unfortunately, uh we weren't able to start that project yet. Because we're building on. At ever source parcel, and we are still finalizing the negotiate, the negotiations for that easement. We do acquire and we have to acquire new easement due to the new location of the pump station, so that's why. Um all this time went by and we ended up not finalizing and being able to really start the project. But now that we are pretty much finalizing the easement, we would be ready to start, so we're back to you. Pretty much to request again the same variance that we did in the past. Um Mister Chairman, I'll leave up to you if you like that I add more about the project and why we need the variance, or. I don't know if you guys have further questions, or should I just continue?
Um I would say continue, but let me just do a quick check with the. The board. Uh the of those that are hearing, is there anybody that needs more information? If you do, say so now. Apparently not. Now.
Plans, if that's okay.
Ben, ask.
Yeah, I'd like to see the the plans for the new building, if that's okay.
Um so um um uh we're gonna share our screen and we'll be able to to show you. So um since, do you mind if I just run through that? We have like pretty much just three pages, I think that will be easier for you guys to visualize everything. So uh what you're seeing ahead of you, um as it is in blue is really. The existing easement that we have, and that is our existing uh pump station. What we are proposing to do is to build a new one, whereas the yellow and that will be already being removed from the floodway zone. Um on our next slide. Um it will explain why we need a variance better, so what happened is that if you see those three green lines. Those are the overhead transmission lines uh that ever source has over that parcel. And what happened is that we cannot build um up to a certain distance, so they do have some uh. Restrictions, not only vertical but also horizontal due to the. Uh to wind conditions that can move a little bit those wires. And that is really the reason why we cannot go to a second store, so although we do have the clearance. I would say uh horizontal, we do not have it um vertical, so that's why we can only build up to a store. Um so you you can see on the drawing where we have the dot line is the original one. And was already just a store building, and then we're gonna move to the other side away from the floodway zone. And that's where we have the restriction of the height there. Um the next slide will show you. The plant, so it's not anything much fancy, it's just a regular pump station, we have few. Uh around the city, so that's why it is just uh one store. And I just want to also emphasize that this pump station takes care of one of our major sewer lines. That comes down on Connecticut Avenue, um it is very, very critical that we replace it soon. Um and that's why we're in front of you today, we're hoping to have all this approved. And then start construction early next year.
Okay, anybody have questions? Uh hearing none. I'm just gonna ask a quick one. Um your nearest business neighbor is how far from your new pump station?
Um we can go back to the second drawing, and I believe that we will show something there. This is on Route One, and I believe the. We do have a a little bit of a commercial, um but we are definitely meeting the uh the requirements for the setbacks. We don't have any issues related to that, it's just on the height itself.
No, just occasionally we have issues of how visible the structure is. And if you're right in the middle of a retail area, you want to take an effort, make an effort to disguise it a little bit anyway.
Okay, we'll take that in consideration, also just want to point it out that. Um if you guys are familiar with that site, it is a little bit lower. Um most, you know, like if you look at the elevation and. And they might zoom in a little bit, because I just want to show what is the elevation on the road and also the elevation uh where we are proposing. So even today on the existing structure is very hard to see uh from the road, because uh that. That parcel is a little bit lower than the road itself.
Thank you.
No problem.
Andy, am I permitted to ask a question, or do I have?
We can, we're like the public at the moment, we don't get. With our colleagues by saying we don't like it, so move ahead.
Okay, uh two questions. First, can you show where there's parking for this facility? And is there any landscaping could be placed on the site?
Uh there is no parking, we don't plan to have any parking in it. Um because usually what happened is we don't have a person staff all the times at. At there, so usually what it is is they would only go in for maintenance. Um and the easement that we are taking is really for the pump station and not like a parking lot. The.
Let me interrupt. There's gotta be a driveway to get to the structure.
Correct, but.
Where does that vehicle park?
Usually right next to the pump station.
Where is the drive, where is the driveway off of Connecticut Avenue?
We'll we'll show you, I think that we can see better on on the other drawing, the entrance will be. Now, can you just put it there for me? I believe it is coming from. It is coming from this side, Ralph, or it is coming from Connecticut Avenue, the drop. Ralph, are you there?
Yep, sorry, my uh mute, I was muted, um so to get to the uh. Existing pump station, we make a right onto the ever source property, it's a parking lot. And then right by the tower is the is a gravel road, which you can actually see it on the drawing. To sound.
I'm not, I'm not seeing it.
Well, it's, hey, uh now, yeah, if you can put your cursor on the existing pump station. And then to the left of it, that shaded area is the gravel. Driveway, yep, go down, it's like a like a.
That I see.
Yep, so that's the existing gravel driveway to to get to the pump station. And then the U goes up, and then where the work zone buffer is, that's the exit to. To the existing parking lot on ever sources property to Connecticut Avenue. So if you head north now, now you with the cursor.
Well, I don't think it's very clear on your site plan.
It it might be on the the first slide now, yeah, if you go to the first slide. It's the the entrance uh where the tower is, um now, if you could show where the tower is right there. The existing parking lot is just to the left uh. Where our new easement is gonna be, so that easement shows access from Connecticut Avenue to get to our pump station.
Again, I'm very, I'm I'm very knowledgeable about knowledgeable about reading drawings. I don't find this readable or understandable.
So I have one question, is this right around Chick-fil-A and opposite Wendy's?
It is, so uh Chick-fil-A is on the other side, the east side of the Killer Brook, we're on the west side of the Killer Brook, where the high tension power lines are.
The other part of my question is, are you providing any landscaping or screening on the site? And is the site gonna have a lawn? Is it gonna be wild? What?
The existing, most of it right now is paved. And we're we're not looking to put grass, we're trying to maintain the existing uh features that are on the site.
So you're not adding any screening at all?
As far as screening, it's good, um all the wastewater pump station equipment is gonna be inside the the structure.
I understand that, are you screening the building with any vegetation?
As of now, we are not planning to, because it's what we have on the other one, we don't.
Don't you think it might be nice to provide some screening? Uh a little green. But that'll be a decision made by this board.
And we can take that in consideration, and um.
Or we can make it a requirement.
We might require it, just so you understand. Uh how this works.
I have a question, that existing.
Let me ask you a question about the retail, I don't think I got an answer. Isn't there an electrical supply company immediately adjacent?
The adjacent property is, I I don't know if it's still the name, but it's F and M Electrical Supply.
Okay, I thought it was right there, and I just. We had talked about this in the past, and we were a little bit concerned about. The pump station and its proximity. Uh therefore, the question about screening. Go ahead.
I mean, you're essentially relocating the pump station further back from Connecticut Avenue towards the back corner of the site. That's at the back end of this parking lot, what's this parking lot used for?
Ever Source owns it, and they in the past, they had an agreement with like Town Fair Tire. And maybe one other entity, they have an agreement for to allow like an overflow parking lot for their vehicles. Those agreements are expiring, because they're gonna be giving the the this property this easement to the city of Norwalk.
Okay, because I think that that kind of plays into like what Lee's thinking about landscaping in front of the building, right? Because it's essentially this parking lot. Currently.
We we have no issues on adding some landscaping, we'll we'll hear your concerns. But as of now, um just to be transparent, we weren't planning to do any screaming, but we are we're open to consider that. Um but at the same time, um I I just want to point that. You know, the variance that we are asking is to reduce the height, so if we go with. What we could be able to build on that side, that we we wouldn't be in front of you. Well, you it will be even a taller uh building that you guys gonna have on that lot, we're we're reducing the height of it.
One additional question, how are you treating the location of the existing uh pump station?
It will be demolished, and then we're gonna be restored to grass.
Okay, and easement transferred back to ever source, so the city will relinquish the existing easement.
Okay, for the existing pump house. Check correct?
Yeah, correct.
Okay. Yeah, I know where this is and I remember the problem with the old pump station and the idea of two stories and this is all fresh in my mind, but I'm not sitting on this one, so I can't really offer an opinion one way or the other. Um. I, I think there's multiple ways to screen something. Um all the way from cyclone fence with uh stuff dot dropped down through the interleaving. Um that's one way. Um there's also uh our revital, uh there's bushes, there's grass, all kinds of things. But this is a parking lot, so I'd be thinking more of a fence with some sort of block. Is that a problem with your operation to obscure a building like that?
It depends where it goes, Mr. Chairman. And again, we, we need to have the building. Usually, we go there for maintenance or when there is a problem. So we, we have to be careful on what type of landscaping we're gonna put into it. But sometimes we have to make sure that we can have the trucks have access to it. But as I said, we're gonna, as soon as we finalize uh the whole drawings, we're gonna consider add some more landscaping to it.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions from the sitting board?
Can you go back to the uh second page? I agree with the, some of the other comments that these drawings were a little tricky to read. I had to pull up Google Maps on my other screen and look at the satellite view to get an idea of where the uh parking lot is. Um existing right now. And it looks like, I don't know, kinda just comparing them side by side, the uh leftmost you know, green line that represents the, the transmission line, looks like it pretty much sits right on top of the edge of the parking lot and the existing uh greenery. Is that, is that accurate?
It, it's approximate.
Yeah, yeah, approximately. So then it looks like the new building is being built sort of in the middle of the lot between where the greenery is at and the edge of the, the building. Then you, to its west.
The new building is not the one in the middle. That is the electrical tower.
Right, right. Yeah, the middle of the parking lot, I'm saying. It's in roughly in the middle of the parking lot. I'm just trying to understand contextually where the new building is being proposed relative to the other structures that are already around it. And some of the other features. And yeah, this, this, this drawing is a little bit tricky for me to interpret, unfortunately. Um but I, I think I basically get the idea.
The, the building, um the why it's situated where it is, that's the only spot on the property that we can put it uh to meet the EverSource setbacks, both the hor- horizontal and the vertical. Cuz there's that, you can see there's that EverSource work zone buffer. And then to the left of that or to the west of that is the EverSource windage buffer due to the wires. So because it's, the wires can swing.
Yeah.
And can stretch.
And let me say that, that, that point's been made clear. I think the thing that wasn't clear is whether we tried because of some of the retail around there, tried to obscure the pump house. Whether it's a cyclone fence with uh green drops through the whatever you call them. Uh or whether it's actual planting. If it's the middle of a parking lot, I don't know an actual planting makes a whole lot of sense, but you know, I, a fence with cyclone that opens wide that you could get into. Uh, the only thing I don't know is how you check security on these and whether that prevents a proper security check.
Um so the, the doors at the pump station, we have uh a SCADA system, it's computerized system. We have uh, it's alarmed. The doors are alarmed, so we know if somebody tries to enter the pump station twenty-four seven.
All right, so you don't have to have eyes on the station all the time.
No, no, we act, um we don't have cameras, but we have monitoring of pumps, doors, access hatches, everything's locked. Um and if somebody breaks in, we know because of sensors.
Okay, it's good enough for me.
Um and I just wanna add one thing that I guess, um I wanted to call your attention. Um we need to relocate the pump station, not such a far area from the existing one because that's where our sewer pipes are getting to. So is also something that we can, we have to do based on the existing infrastructure location.
I think that's pretty obvious. I think what we're looking at is access to the site and screening. And maybe just a better map of clarification would be, would have been more helpful in this area.
Um understood. Um we, we ended up using uh the same apps that we used last time, so I apologize for it. It wasn't clear that this wasn't good the first time.
Well, I think the, the issues were a little simpler. The, the first application, this has gotten a bit more complex and you're really not showing us where the drives are, where the parking is, what the materials are, how you're treating uh the site of the demolished pump house. Is there excavation involved? You know, we're only drawing this out from you in this conversation when the information should have been on a map for us.
Um I, I just wanna confirm, I believe that we, we're submitting exactly what was submitted the first time. We're not uh, uh we didn't send anything different. We are not uh even the layout. We, we haven't changed. But, but I'm hearing you. I'm not saying that you're, I totally understand your concern and I, I apologize for that. We'll do, we're definitely gonna uh take all that in consideration. But just to reemphasize, uh we're gonna definitely consider the screening. Um and I, I hope that you guys will be able to move this forward uh after we explain where will be the driveway and the parking and the new location that we are proposing.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sitting on this decision, but I would hope that uh my fellow board members would ask uh that you submit a further drawing for our review because I think we have far too many questions that aren't answered by your site plan.
Yeah, I, I, I'm, I'm with you. I think we need some more here. I mean, it's nice, you know, same time next year, these were the plans you submitted, but you do have some things that are hard to read. And also, I think this city, because it's under canopy, if that's a word, be nice to throw up a couple of trees there just to grab some CO2 out of the air on on a Connecticut Avenue, if it meets and aesthetically looks okay. That's my two cents.
Let me point out that if they're underneath the electric wires, the swing in the wood, that's a problem.
Yeah, I'm not talking about a big tree. It's just something, you know, like a sugar maple that maybe is fourteen, well, twelve feet or something like that that you could maybe trim a little bit. But that's really not a great looking section of Connecticut Avenue. I know that that's another statement, but I think any, you know, see on there could help.
Um we're hearing, I just also wanna emphasize that this is not our site. We have an easement um that we are taking. So um we also have to make sure that whatever we're gonna proposing as trees. We're gonna have the blessing from EverSource. This is not a site that we own. Um and that's why when I'm asking you guys uh that we're gonna definitely consider and try to add the screen. Um there is a whole process that we've have been fighting for two years with EverSource to be able to relocate this pump station. I understand the concerns that you will have. We're in agreement and we're gonna do our best to commit to the screening. But now for me to come back and and do the drawings and bring back to you with some trees, I cannot do that without approval from EverSource as well. And that can delay even more the process. I just wanna flag that to you. Um I, I think that in all my applications that I've been in front of this board and all the work that we have been doing, me and my staff. We have, just this year, we planted over two hundred and sixty trees around the city. Um and as the chief of operations and public works, I'm committed that I'm gonna do my best uh to do screening in the pump station. I hear you guys loud and clear. But I'm also asking you to be fair because for me to redo this design and come back to you showing trees. I will need to get approval from EverSource and this may delay my whole process with the easement that we have hours and hours, actually, a, a couple of years, and that's why this hasn't been built yet. So I, I need you guys also to be reasonable. This is a critical asset that we're having that we know that is about to fail. If we do not do it, but if, even though with the variance, we still have a long process until we can break ground. So the more that we get delayed, there are more chances that that pump station will fail. And that carries one of our biggest sewer line in the city. The only reason why we're in front of you is because of a height variance. And the reason why we cannot build a two store, we're going lower, is because of the buffer that we need to keep from the high transmission lines. So I do understand your concerns. I hear you. I agree. This probably could have been a better side map, but it wasn't the feedback that we came on the first time. Otherwise, we would have adjusted that. But.
This is not the first time.
Wait a minute, stop. Uh too long an explanation as to why you can't. Um what we could require is if we approve this, part of, I'm just explaining this as chairman. We could include a requirement that there be some screening of some sort and the sitting board could dream that up. That can be done without uh bringing the project to a halt. And at some point, you can provide a map. That was conclusive detail that was asked about tonight.
Thank you. We can get that done for sure.
Anybody else have a question or comment?
I, I am just curious, where, where the pumping station is now, and uh I know I've passed it by. I mean, is there trees? Is, is there a?
I don't, I think it's just out in the open.
Okay, I just thought I'd bring that up as a, you know, just a comparison here. But I mean, I, I would love to see some sort of, you know, uh barrier, but I'm just saying we don't have it now. So uh it would be nice to include it, but I also see that there seems to be an urgency. And we haven't had it before and it's right on Route One.
But that could be ex post facto. I mean, you could construct this and then we could, there could be some sort of agreement down the road to say, let's, let's beautify it a little bit.
So I'm just saying.
But you know, Marilyn, um the sitting board can require as, as a, a part, a part of the approval process, that certain things happen. Um that we get an updated map that shows access uh egress uh et cetera to the pump station. Uh parking for maintenance vehicles near the pump station. Um and whatever type of uh obscuring material could be put up given the retail locations nearby. That could all be part of whatever it is you guys decide you wanna say. We don't have to make them come back.
I'm not saying I, I, I agree with that. I'm just saying that comparatively speaking, we haven't had some of that to date and now they have to move i- in any event. And I just wanna, I just wanna give it a, a more, I think, a more balancing feel is we haven't had that. I'd like to see that for sure. I, I would love to see everything in Norwalk, you know, be beautified. So yes, I think that would be a very good added thing. I just don't know that it's something to stop.
Yeah, I, I do recall that it was a big issue the last time around when we were dealing with the pump station. That's my recollection and the fact that it is not a beautiful thing. And there, uh I don't even know if Chick-fil-A had moved in yet at that point, but they were due to move in. And so we're starting to get concerned, the city was concerned. If you start putting pump stations all over the place and they're ugly as could be, is that really helping the beautification of the city? Well, you have to screen them because pump stations are a necessity. And we've gotta have them, but we can, can screen them. Anyway, just, that's added information for you. That's not to make your decision for you.
No, and, and I agree with it. I, 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 I agree with that. I just wanna kind of bring a a balance that we haven't had it before, but I do think it would be a, a really good idea. Um. Just not sure if that should hold something up if something is failing. But um I do think it's a good idea. I'd like to see more totally beautified, so.
Good. Um any other uh comments or questions from the board at this point? Okay, let's ju- get the public involved if there is anybody. Um let's take down the map so I can see what's going on. And if anybody from the public wants to come in to support this uh station variance request, um raise your hand and star nine on your phone.
No raised hands.
Okay, is anybody out there in the public opposed? Once again, raise your hand or star nine if you're on your phone.
No raised hands.
All right, great. Uh I don't think we need to go further. I think we got it all. It's time to start to process this. So I'm pulling that one and let me go back to the O two item. Which is Day Street. And the people who sat and are the decision makers are Andy Conroy, Marilyn Altman. Lee Levy, Daniel Sanchar, and Keith Lye. So any of you five can participate in the discussion and formulate motions. If you're not one of those five, you cannot. You have to be silent.
I'll make a motion, we approve the application as submitted. However, we limit the large tournaments to uh seven times a year for the next two years and permit them to have I'll call them robotic clinics periodically as needed.
I second that motion.
All right, um pay close attention. It's been moved and seconded. And if there's any last discussion on it, speak now. Hearing none, um let's vote all in favor, say aye and raise your.
Aye.
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 Okay, any nays? Any abstentions? We're doing this right by the book, folks.
Yes, we finally learned.
Yes, we finally learned. Um the item passes as proposed. And with, it is with the caveat that uh we give approval but limit to seven large um events at that location per year. And you have, remember now, you have a two-year exception to the normal zoning requirements. Um and that means it's not renewable. You only got two years to go on this and then um you're up the creek without a paddle if you don't have Plan B. Okay, we're all set to go, go with the next one, which is O three.
Thank you, everyone. Have a nice evening.
Sure. Nice, Saji.
Uh the hard review property. And sitting on that one was Marilyn Altman, Lee Levy, Tom Parkus, Daniel Sanchar, and Keith Lye.
Um. I'll make a motion that we approve the application, uh which is also subject to uh AM review. So I'm sure they'll be as critical as they can be on this. So I move that we, without condition, approve the uh application.
All right, well, excuse me, I'll second that, Lee.
All right, any further discussion? The only reason I'm asking that is that's the general way you're supposed to do this, so.
Uh I don't have anything to add. I certainly uh understand the difficulties and the constantly shifting FEMA regulations when it comes to the rising tide.
Yeah.
And I wish the applicants well.
Yes, we do. So with uh no other items stipulated in it, we do the approval. So all in favor, say aye and raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
And those who are against, say you are against, raise your hand. If you're abstaining, say you're abstaining, say, and raise your hand. All right, so it is unanimous. When you do things by the book, it seems kinda silly, doesn't it? Anyway, uh.
Thank you, board.
You're welcome.
Have a good night. Have a good night.
No.
We have uh item O four. And that is the one we have just heard. Item O four, and by the way, taking these in order rather than backwards helps me, I don't know about anybody else.
Uh Andy, I agree with you that we have set new procedure. And I like it.
Okay, terrific, oh four, thank you, Lee. Um on that was Marilyn Altman, Tom Parkus, Daniel Sanchar. Ben Hamperter and Keater and Keith Lyon, one, two, three, four, five, yep. And you're the folks that are gonna make the decision. So you can lead the discussion. Lee's not on that one and neither am I. Y'all go sit and stare at each other, you're gonna do something.
I'm happy to start, only because um. Not the architect or engineer, however, I live in this town. I would like to pass it with the uh addendum that there is uh. An effort to be made to beautify the area, that's all I I'm saying, I I agree with Andy what you had said earlier. And Lee. And Danielle, you are the architect. Have a much deeper understanding, but I will say that as someone that lives here. Uh I understand that the pump station has to move, I think that. I I think that they should uh give us better plans as to where everything is. But I I do think there should be an effort to always beautify what you're doing, so I'll say that.
Yep, I agree with that, I'll second, I'll second that.
Okay, so Marilyn and Danielle. Yeah, anybody else that has a a comment during our discussion?
No, I I would like to see something done after the fact, I'm not gonna hold this up, I don't know if we're responsible for some sewage combustion. But it should move forward, but I think like anything, uh structures are put up and then landscaping is put around it, it wouldn't be the other way around, so. And I think no matter what there is there, Chick-fil-A is still gonna have lines wrapped around the block, so they probably.
That that may be true and may not be true, um it is, but yet to be determined. What what might be nice is if there was an addition requirement that there be a good faith. Effort to uh um obscure the facility. That could be done with grass and bushes or trees or. Uh if nothing else, cyclone fence with drops through the chain link.
I definitely uh agree with that, I mean, that's, that's a very nice uh. It makes the city, it's it it's a beautification thing, but I think it's important. It's important because I come from other places in the world and that's a really good thing to do. And I think we hopefully we have the opportunity to do that, but I.
So you don't, you 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 don't mind us modifying uh your motion? Okay.
Should be added. Effort made.
So, one, two, three, four, five. Um somebody else that me has to propose that, because I'm not on the, in the five. Tom?
Yeah, I mean, I would say we we, I would approve the uh the work to be done, but I would say good faith effort to be able to come up with a solution to. In some way um screen that uh you know, that's that's just takes consideration and I. And then no way to wanna get in in the middle of this, and I don't think it's a real battle, I think it's a consideration, I think it's probably because you're involved in putting. Trees in another location that you would be thinking about this anyway.
Yeah. Alright, so um let's vote, all in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Alright, um anybody saying nay, if so, raise your hand. Uh oh, did I say a hand? Was there a nay? Alright, anybody abstaining, raise your hand. You know, I can't see everybody, Tammy, so I'm gonna say anybody abstaining, also say you're abstaining. Anybody who's objecting, say you were object, alright, otherwise it is. Uh a full court. Yay on the item and it passes. So all three items have passed for this evening and one was withdrawn, the one oh eight Witch Lake.
Um Mister Chairman, thank you so much, and again, you have my commitment that we're gonna do our best to. Make the structure um more enhanced and try to work on some landscaping that will not affect uh the mainness of it. Thank you so much, have a good night, everyone.
You too. Now we've got a little bit more to do. In this poor light, I'm having trouble reading, we should have um. A couple of minutes to deal with here.
We do.
So take it away, Mister Secretary.
Okay, um we have two sets of minutes, one is from the. Uh special meeting ha- we had with uh Steve Kleppen. Uh from May twenty fifth, twenty twenty three, I hope everybody has read these. And uh. Uh I'd like to make a motion that we approve that set of minutes.
Alright, uh is there a second? I'll second it. Is then all in favor, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
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 Um the item is passed, next item.
Okay, I'm searching for the first page. Okay, the second set of minutes is from our regular meeting of April twentieth, twenty twenty three. Um uh it was a regular meeting, I've. I've read the minutes, I hope everybody else has, any comments? deletions, additions? Pardon? Anyway, I would make a motion, we approve the minutes as submitted.
Yes, I'll second it, all in favor, raise your hand.
Favor, thank you.
Alright, that's it. Uh do we have any pending administrative business, Tammy?
Um I just wanted to make a note, um I'm very happy to report statutory changes. Beginning July first of this year, no motor vehicle applications will become, will be going in front of the zoning board of appeals. Acting as an agency of the state, yay.
Thank you.
I'm sure you love it, I I thought it was kinda weird, but.
In the in the opinion paper, they cited um that there was no direction from the. The statute about, you know, what you were supposed to be looking at.
Yeah, there isn't.
Well, I always had, I always had the idea in my head. That when we were approving these motor vehicle locations. Uh that we were kinda establishing a motor vehicle zone. Uh we have one on Main Avenue. And there are elsewhere in the city and that we try to keep them all together rather than. You know, uh use car lot here, car wash there, motive, you know, there was some logic to it, but. You know, it wa- it was just more of a nuisance.
Yeah, I I didn't know that we had the authority to do that, but I knew that we could prevent them from putting it next door to kitty care. Or a medical facility, we, uh common sense tells us that, but when you go beyond that, there was no guidance.
Yeah.
None.
Yeah, I I have a question that I guess we were talking to Steve, it it wound up at the end of that was. About car placement and cars on lawns and things like that, and then there was something, was some code was passed along. Which I couldn't really decipher, I couldn't figure yes or no, that's okay, does anybody, can anybody clarify that?
No, I can't, because I looked at it and I have the same issue, I can't figure it out from up from down.
So that code has not been adopted yet, that's part of the proposed draft regulations.
I understood that, but doesn't mean that I understood what I read.
I just can't understand it, I mean.
The park court?
Can that be dissected and can that be dissected and brought and sent along to make it readable and understandable to laypeople?
Yeah, the way it, the way it read was kinda like, well, if you do a permeable um driveway. You know, you pretty much do whatever you want, and I I'm not for that, I mean, that that's ridiculous, actually.
Well, no, it limited to a a percentage of the front. And they and they only get that opportunity if there's no possibility because of structure to get to the rear for parking.
Alright, or side.
Yeah.
I I just think that needs to be clarified, it's just not.
No, I agree, it needs improvement.
Did did we ever get word uh if the entire uh board uh met the education requirement?
I didn't receive all of the trainings, the copies of the training certificates for everybody.
I owe you one.
Okay.
I owe you one as well.
Yeah.
I did get it.
So there is a potential modification to uh that was. Bill twenty one, twenty nine, or I don't remember the exact number, but we are, there's been, uh I've heard. Stirrings that there's been something moved through committee that may alter uh those land use training requirements.
I don't think I'm pretty good regardless myself.
I thought it was great, uh I mean, I'm well versed in zoning, but. You know, I didn't read all five hundred and ninety-four pages, but it was very informational.
Yeah. They're they're not gonna take away their requirement or that, you know, the the new legislation, they're just gonna modify it somewhat, I don't know if it's to get, I think it's to get. I I can't remember right now, it's once every, or what is our, it says you have to have initial land use training by twenty twenty four. There may be an extension of that, and then I think the training had to have been done. Other than the the current legislation is, I think, every two years, and I think the proposal is maybe to extend that a little bit.
Yeah, no, Tammy, you were around when we created our own requirement that there be training. And then pushed real hard to get that training provided to the boards. And there is a legalistic way we can approach that, because we can create our own procedures. And part of those procedures can be that there is a training required. So and if somebody doesn't meet the training, then they can't sit on the board, real simple.
Yeah, that's through ordinance uh one sixteen.
So this, it gives us a lot of leeway as to what we can demand of ourselves. Um I didn't go that direction, because I thought that we didn't need that kind of stricture, but. Um if somebody will remove the requirement, we can go right back to what we had, that's requirement, and maybe strengthen it a little bit. The, is there anything else that we need to know, have have people talked to you about them taking vacations and being gone for the next meeting or any of that stuff?
No.
My next vacation is in twenty twenty four, that's when I expect to be fully mobile.
Uh I pray that you will be.
Thank you.
Pray that I will return healthy from Ireland after I.
Okay. Well, I'd like to uh propose uh uh or move that we uh join this meeting tonight.
That sounds like a good plan, I second that.
Uh I'm in favor.
Yeah, everybody in favor, turn off your machine.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.